皆様おはようございます。
Good morning. Thank you for joining with us despite your busy schedule to join us at the special session on the eighth day of the Pacific Islands the week. And thank you for joining with us on the live streaming. This time, the Nui delegation strongly requested for the opportunity to share with us their initiatives on the ocean management in Nui. To the west is Tonga, to the east is Cook Islands, and to the north Samoa, that's where Nui is located with a population of seventeen hundred. The size of the land area is about the same as Ishigaki Island of two hundred fifty-nine square kilometers with the EEZ of about four hundred fifty thousand square kilometers. The major industries are tourism and fishery. And Nui is one of the first countries that committed to the sustainable management of the hundred percent of EEZ. Today, we have a pleasure of having Mr. Jinam Puyai Hopotoa, the Nui Oceanwide Officer, to discuss with us the Nui Oceanwide. Now over to you, Mr. Jinam.
Konnichiwa, greetings and faraola here to ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jinam Puyai Hopotoa, representing the Nui Oceanwide and Ocean Conservation Commitments from the beautiful island, the Rock of Polynesia, Nui. It is an honor and it is a pleasure to be here, to speak to you all and in behalf of our organization and also here at the Sasekawa Peace Foundation. So I just wanted to run you with a brief presentation. So a background on the initiative. So Nui Oceanwide, the project, is a public-private partnership between TOFI A Nui, an NGO, and the Nui government. So the Nui Oceanwide is the baby of that partnership. So what we deal with is sustainable management of our natural resources and our exclusive economic zones. Next slide, please. Okay, so for Nui Oceanwide, because Nui is no exception in the Pacific to the issues of climate change that we face, and normally, most of the time, we find it very hard to get funding to fund the projects that deal with conservation, deal with mitigation of the climate crisis and the issues that we face back home. So quite often when we do get the funding, it is very short, the time period is very short, and also we don't have enough time to implement those funding properly and at our own pace. So what we've come up with is a smart financing mechanism to deal with that, which I will explain very shortly. So the Nui Oceanwide vision is to build a resilient blue economy that is reinforcing the long-term protection of our ocean, not just short-term, not now, but for the future. So we're enhancing and developing a lot of the things that we have in place for the future generations to come. And we have three main steps to this, which will be broken down shortly. We have the EEZ and large-scale marine protected area, which is a hundred percent. Nui has secured a hundred percent of our exclusive economic zone as a marine-protected area, and we have a compliance and implementation strategy of how to look after and monitor that area, as well as we have the increased benefits and sustainable financing mechanism, which I'm very excited to share with you all very shortly. Next slide, please. Okay, so as I highlighted in the beginning, Nui has... Thank you. Key milestones that we have achieved. So as you can see over here on the right-hand side, this whole area highlighted in blue and green, that is our EEZ. And back in two thousand and eighteen, the Nui government signed off forty percent of that exclusive economic zone as a no-take area, so it's under full protection. And as I mentioned earlier, we have a full compliance strategy for this and how we're going to protect it. And this forty percent is the largest no-takes on percentage-wise in the world. So these are the holistic dimension value drivers that we have, that the project that Nui Oceanwide deals with. So we have the ecological, climate change, socio-economic scale and governance. So this is our contribution to the world. It's not only just for Nui, it is for the region and for the world in terms of battling the climate crisis. So we support the Sustainable Development Goals in twenty by thirty, as well as the legal unprotected and unregulated fishing. That's through our MRV and a monitoring system and governance. And we want to take a deeper dive into this. So we have examples of the breakdown of those drivers that we have identified, and we look at the benefits that the Ocean Conservation Commitment can bring. It's not just, like I said before, it's not just for Nui alone. This is scalable, and we're hoping that this can be duplicated into other countries and nations once they have seen how this can work, and it's working tremendously beautiful at the moment. And it's a world first, and no one has ever done this before. So the way it works is, this is the financing mechanism that I was explaining to you about earlier. It is called an Ocean Conservation Commitment. So pretty much what it is, that forty percent zone, the locked-up ocean space of our EEZ, has one hundred and twenty-seven thousand square kilometers of ocean space. Rather than just locking it up like a museum, we have decided to splice every square kilometer into what we call an Ocean Conservation Commitment. We were going to use the word credit, but the financial regulatory systems are not quite ready for that yet, so we had to use the word commitments. So the way it works is, we have source of funds, capitalization financing mechanism, and the use of funds. So the donors can vary from individuals, governments, bilaterals, multilaterals, philanthropy, corporates, anyone. And this is how it works. If you are a bilateral or a government, there's a direct contribution of stream that goes to the NOW Trust endowment, so it's legally registered in New Zealand. The reason why we chose New Zealand is because Nui's regulatory system is still quite young, and New Zealand is just next door to us and have a very stronger legal system that we can tap on to. So it is legally registered, and funds from all the OCCs, if you are an individual, a corporate, or philanthropy, you can either sponsor an Ocean Conservation Commitment, and you'll get a certificate, which looks something like this. This one here is an example of Nui's, the Nui government, they have sponsored every man, woman, and child, one OCC each, as a form of their contribution as a nation to this wonderful initiative. So all the funding from the OCCs sponsored, the Ocean Conservation Commitments, goes into the NOW Trust, and that trust implements all those value drivers that I was explaining about earlier. Financing, sponsorship for scholarships of kids wanting to learn about marine-protected areas, marine diversity, and restoration of coral reefs, the support for businesses wanting to move into ecotourism, the transitioning from that, and also many other great things, local initiatives as well, the village projects that deal with conservation, as long as they're in line with the value drivers and also the, what do you call it, the breakdown that we've done here, it's all good to go. So this is how it works. We've broken it down with the cost-benefit analysis of one OCC. It's pretty much twelve dollars fifty per year, and you forward sell that to twenty years, you pay upfronts two hundred and fifty dollars in New Zealand, which is equivalent to about one hundred and forty US, and that is for twenty years of protection. So you become a guardian of that space for twenty years. So like I mentioned earlier, not only are you a guardian of that ocean space, funds from that goes back into the island as well and things on land. So that's the breakdown, and two hundred and fifty. And the reason why it's thirty-two million, it's because every square kilometer from the two hundred and fifty dollars, that one hundred and twenty-seven thousand equates to the thirty-two million NOW Trust endowment. So this is a much more strategic and detailed explanation of how the funding flows and how it's implemented. Okay, so these are our four value drivers that I mentioned earlier. We have the enhanced compliance and management capabilities, development of village sustainable resources, and we also have sustainable climate resilience and risk reduction, which deals with the tourism and accreditation, and we try and help promote this, help the businesses on the island as well move away from, you know, the fossil fuels and also using plastic in their businesses. For example, if you're a boat operator, we encourage you, when you're taking your guests out, to use paper cups rather than plastic cups. This is a simple example of how that could look. And also, this is an example of how we support residential fishing compared to, because at the beginning, in that zone, that forty percent, the government, there used to be a lot of fishing going around, happening around there until we locked it up. So the versus of commercial fishing with residential fishing, the value is a lot higher when you calculate it, having that area locked up. So this is an example, it's a little video that shows that comparison.
All around the South Pacific, tourism is booming, but without sites like this, there would be no opportunity, and more significantly for our governments, no revenue. So what is the value of seeing animals or catching them recreationally and being able to feed our community versus the commercial value of catching and exporting them? Tourism is Nui's biggest income earner, with over nine thousand people coming to Nui each year to fish, dive, whale watch, and holiday. But what is the real value of a tourist catching a fish to Nui and its people? Richard here is one of the four hundred tourists who come here specifically to fish. For Richard, this thirty-kilogram wahoo is the fish of a lifetime. But the value to Nui of Richard catching this fish is extraordinary. Against what he and his wife have spent on their holiday, this fish equates to one hundred and fifty dollars per kilo to our economy. In addition, the skipper owns the fish, meaning he will feed his family, the village, as well as selling to the restaurants where Richard is likely to pay for his fish again. The same fish, if caught commercially, would return on average less than one percent of that to a government from the sale of fishing licenses. And that one hundred and fifty per kilo doesn't just go in one pocket either. Richard's spend on he and his wife's trip directly affected more than one-third of the population of Nui financially. Accommodation, rental cars, restaurants, other activities, even those who work at the airport, have directly benefited from Richard's spend. This is the reason now, with the support of the Nui government, have taken even greater steps to protect their fish.
The Nui government has committed to closing off forty percent of its exclusive economic zone, including the territorial seas that surround Nui. The government couldn't put more towards safeguarding the future of people, not just for economic development purposes, but more importantly, for food security reasons. The buckeyes that you see out there in the water today, they want to be able to go out and have a catch ray that they are used to experiencing in days past, and the government is doing their part to try and make sure that we do have sustainable catches in NOW EEZ.
This is Nui, and this is our vision for our future, a sustainable one, where low-impact tourism creates jobs and revenue that reduces our reliance on the commercial exploitation of our fisheries. A future where food security is protected, a future of restored abundance.
Okay, so that's a glimpse of home and also what we are protecting, part of what we're protecting. So that's the comparison and value of commercial fishing versus residential fishing in that lockup of the forty percent. So these are our goals, our short-term, medium-term, and long-term goals. As I said in the beginning, this is not just for now, this is for the future. And so, so far, we have accomplished a lot of the goals, as you can see at the bottom here, and we've brought some really good, great results. If you go into our website, nuiocanwide.com, and you can see our impact stories. So with every sponsorship of Ocean Conservation Commitments, the OCCs, everyone who sponsors, whether you are an individual, a corporate, a business, it doesn't matter what kind of donation donor you are, you get the same report, and you get all the impact stories of how those funds are being spent. So as you can see, the impact story is on our website if you go on, and you'll have a look at them, there's quite a few. We have covered some activities at COP last year, and also there was a special mission out to Beveridge Reef. The New Zealand Navy heard about the initiative and also wanted to support with the monitoring and surveillance, so they stopped over and picked up some of our colleagues and did a mission down to Beveridge Reef. And also, so this is what the annual report looks like, so it'll be a whole reporting of whether funds have been spent and how they've been implemented. So these are our partners, and there's a lot of room there for more partners. So if you are keen and interested in supporting us and joining this journey, it is amazing, and it is not just for us. Like I said, it's our contribution to the world, it's more of a journey than just an initiative. So it's a world first, and you're more than welcome to. So this is what we are currently at at the moment. We have our anchor contributors, and we are trying to get the word out there as well. So if you're listening in, and just wanted to tell you a very short story. When this was launched last year in New York in the UN Climate Week, a day after, we have just, we just saw a massive increase of interest in people from varying all around the world, so from grandparents to parents and little boutique businesses, church groups, random right around the world, it was amazing. And because it was launched in September, Christmas was coming up, and rather than buying the kids' Christmas toys, these parents and grandparents wanted to buy their grandchildren and children, and they wanted to make them guardians, something much more bigger than just, you know, receiving toys. Guardians for twenty years, and they will be helping to support other children across the world. So the fact that that's the impact of the Nui Oceanwide and Ocean Conservation Commitments have made was really, really awesome, and so nice to see. So it's open to anyone, and we're really looking forward to taking you on this journey with us. Like I said, it's not only for Nui, it's scalable, it's for the region and our contribution to the world in battling the issues of climate change. So I just wanted to end on there and like to say thank you very, very much for supporting and for being here today and allowing us to present our great initiative here to you all who are listening in from Japan and all around, and also, most importantly, thank you so much to the Sasekawa Peace Foundation for allowing us the time. Thank you very much. Fugori Mahaki, arigato gozaimasu.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jinam. I was impressed by that it's not just for Nui, but for all over the world, but it's not an initiative, it's a journey. Thank you very much again. But we'd like to invite Marylin San, who is studying at the doctorate course at APU, Ritz-Mecon Asia Pacific University, and Dr. Falaora, who is working for Viola Hospital in Tonga, and who used to be studying in Japan. Moderator, Marylin San, please.
Thank you, Jinam, for your wonderful presentation, and I think it's a very important topic to be discussed, and the initiative that Nui has taken in is, I would like to applaud for the initiative, and also the story that you have shared at the end is really touching, and I think it needs to go out more to the world and something that our younger generation needs to look after too. So we have some questions, or like we'll have a discussion, open discussion, on some of the things from the initiatives. You have mentioned in terms of funding, that either you receive funding, whether it's short or in terms of timeframe and in terms of dollar values as well. Is the organization putting in place any strategies? And what would be some suggestions, recommendations to the donor agencies to overcome this issue?
Thank you very much for the question. Yes, like I mentioned earlier, we have the funding come in every now and then, but the time period of spending funding sometimes often very, very short. And if it doesn't, if we don't, aren't able to use it all up, you know, it gets taken back. The initiative that we've created here has a strategy where if you have a project, say for example, if you're an organization or a department back in Nui that has a project that aligns with our initiative, conservation and all the value drivers that we have, and if you don't have the capacity yet to implement those funds, we can hold part of it for you until you're ready. But they, it's at our own pace, so it's a fit-for-purpose initiative that we can implement those funds. Those projects that are wanting to, you know, be done can be done in a comprehensive rate at their own pace, so they're not pressured to like, oh, we have to do it now, 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 and it's a rush job. This is, it's a way where they can do it very nicely and at their own pace.
Thank you. So when we look at the funding, it always comes with monitoring and evaluation, and also the sustainability of the projects as well. How would the success of this conservation efforts measured, and how is it reported to the ecological, climate change, socioeconomic impacts level as well?
Sure, okay, so with all the OCCs that have been sponsored, they go back into the trust, and there is MRV, and there's a reporting every, every annually of how those, once we start with the implementation, there is reporting around that. And like I mentioned, there is impact stories, where transparent as possible with all of the donors and people contributing, the OCCs, and also direct contributions from our partners of how those funds have been spent and where they're going to. So there's full transparency there, and we have a hundred percent respect and honor for everyone who has contributed.
Thank you. What are some of the risks or potential risks that you expect going forward with this project, and also in terms of the challenges that NOW Trust anticipates in achieving the goals and to mitigate the issue?
So we've calculated all the risk factors that, like for example, before setting up the value, calculate the value of the OCC, we've calculated the highest risk factor for the tourism in all the sectors. So for example, if we have a major cyclone, we've calculated the values of what it will cost to, you know, not offset, but to help and support that. And there is that breakdown that I showed earlier of how that looks like, and we've consolidated that into the value of what it is now, which is two hundred and fifty dollars per, for twenty years, twelve dollars fifty per year. So we've calculated all those, and the OCC outweighs and covers all that, all the risks that we have. So hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you. We'll get back more with you. I would like to ask our neighboring country, Tonga, if they have a similar initiative, and how does Tonga or the government or even private sectors are involved in conservation, ocean conservation projects, and in terms of socioeconomic impacts involving community, culture, tradition as well?
Thank you, and thank you very much for the lovely presentation, and I think I can, Tonga and the rest of the Pacific can relate to what has been mentioned. For Tonga, there is, I know there's a national plan for marine management in Tonga, and I think what has been said, that I'm sure the rest of the Pacific is following the same plan, basically scaling up of policy changes to conservative efforts to make sure the sustainable, safe practices and fostering an environment to restore critical habits. But I think whatever's happening in Tonga or in the Pacific, what we lack is the sustainable financial magnetism to make sure this is fully implemented and successful. One, two, is have a robust MNE framework, decide in a way to make sure that the, our oceans are safe, but at the same time contribute to the socioeconomic development of the country, but then it doesn't off balance in the sense that compromise the lives of the ocean, and of course, looking, all of this promoting a safer future of our future generation. But having, I feel that, having said that, it all comes back to just doing the basics right, increase public awareness and education programs for improved behavior and attitude, just starting small and hopefully encouraging the individual, having a more ecological approach, multi-faceted and multi-level approach, so we can all work together to promote a safer environment and oceans for our Pacific, whilst having said that, and to address the main contributor to climate change, which is globally. But I think as we understand that with the current and predicted climate change modeling, it's not gonna, whatever's happening is not gonna reverse, but we can do whatever we can at the best circumstances in our smaller countries, and hoping for international cooperation to support the small island states in our small initiatives for positive results. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hola. Just adding on to that, as Nui has involved a lot of, they have did a lot of community engagement, and a portion goes back to the community, more communities are very inclusive in this project. Do you think this is also feasible with Tonga? And how well does the community engagement works in terms of this kind of, when it comes to decision-making, knowing that fishing is our source of income, it's part of our tourism, socioeconomic development as well, but at the end of the day, it's our community that we are looking into, that are most impacted?
Thank you, yes, definitely, and it's all to the Pacific countries. Farming and fishing is a large main source of income, one, two, and that's main, the food for families and the communities. But like I've mentioned before, there's a shift in the ecosystem and just the environment with the, seeing the extremes of climate change have an impact on our environment, so we need to stand, and all comes with leadership and good governance, and making sure that the policies are being reinforced and enacted at different levels, so we can have a greater impact for positive results. Yeah, but in terms of tourism, of course, as you've seen the videos, people come, it's for personal and the community benefits and also... for personal and the community benefits and also contribute to the economic development of the country. But we just need to see where the balance across, yeah, weigh the pros and cons and make sure the balance not off to the extent that we compromise the lives of our people and our, and our oceans. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Before I would just ask another question, I also open the floor for if they have any questions with our speaker today. So Jin Nam-san, before this project was initiated, what was the fishing activity like? And what is like after this project as well? And can you, can you further elaborate on this activity? How is it impacted and how, how it will look like in the future as well?
Absolutely. Thank you very much for the question. And yes, this project took 10 years to create, 10 years of frustration. And then that whole, all those culminated to finding the solution. So when it comes to fishing, before this project was set up and also in the process as well, we can see a decline in the fish stocks, right? Our fishermen, like for me, I go out in the ocean a lot back home. I do spearfishing and also fishing on the boats as well and also in canoe. And I noticed in that period of time, even before that, there is a decline in, in the fish we catch, the fish are moving away, the fish are not there and there's not, and we hear the stories, right? You hear the stories from the, a lot of the older fishermen that we go out with and, and talk to. And these are stories. And this is not, not too long ago, they're saying, from the wharf all the way down to the point, which is not quite far, it's only a few kilometers, they're only, that's only how far you have to travel to go and catch some fish. You come back, your boat is loaded, your canoe even, doesn't take many hours. Now, it takes about four hours to almost five or six sometimes, if you're going around the island, to even catch one fish. And it is really tough. This is on the boat. And on the canoe, you spend even longer because sometimes the fish are sitting way deeper or they're not around. So that's change of, from, from the past and now, which is not, not too far, is massive. So the, before the 40% was signed off, like I mentioned before, there was a lot of activity happening in the area and with the commercial fishing, right? And we quite often find floating fads. We have just recently seen a lot of them in the past couple of years, floating in our oceans. So when I go fishing, we see them, we pick them up. And these floating fads are from big fleets. And that shows that they are in the area and they are tracking where the biomass is at. So this lockup of the 40% of our EEZ is very, very crucial. And that, that the value comparison that you saw before of commercial fishing versus residential fishing is very, is very much more balanced approach with the OCCs in place and covering that. And also in the reef as well. So when I was a child, I used to go out and our reef used to be covered, covered in, it's like, not sea moss, it's like seagrass that houses a lot of the shells and edible plants as well in, on the reef. And throughout the years, like right now, there's none left. You can see the change. And this is due to the rising temperatures of climate change, right? So the Ocean Conservation Commitment, this initiative that we have going on, like I said, it is to help mitigate that issue by protecting that area and also helping, helping with the sustainable management of the space, not only out there in the ocean, but also back on land, because that's where it starts. And there's also initiatives to help with the reef as well, reef restoration. And one of those initiatives are the removal of the trappola snails, which are an invasive species back home. One of the, one of the little NGOs have taken those snails rather than just, because they're edible, right? And rather than just discarding them, they have turned them into a, to wearable art. So repurpose them into necklaces and part of those proceeds go back into reef restoration. So I have an example of that. I can share it later on if I have time. But those are one of the initiatives that supports the conservation of the reef and also which inhabits the fish, which then chain reacts down to the bigger fish which we eat. So hopefully that answers your question. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I, I think as a Fijian, I really love this initiative as well because it has a cycle from the community to the national level and even international level. And then it just doesn't stop this project. It's, it's benefiting and impacting everyone's life as well. So I, I really like this project that New Way has taken into initiative. And of course, we, we would like this to go to other Pacific island countries as well and other smaller nation as well. So we'd like to open the floor if there's any questions.
Thank you for the presentation and panel discussion. I have several questions actually. First about the fishery stock, fishery resources and the case of New Way. I don't know about the species there, but there, there must be those fish in the reef? Is it fishery, the reef fish or the tuna? In other words, what kind of stocks are there in your waters? And also, in the case of New Way and the now project, does this cover not only easy but also territorial waters? And then, in the entire area, 40% is now closed and then the remainder 60%. How is it managed? If you can tell us about the specific management measures for the remainder of 60% of the area?
Absolutely. Thank you very much for your question. And yes, we do have the different type of fish. We have the domestic, which are our reef fish. And we also have the migratory fish as well, which are the tuna, the wahoo, mahi-mahi, skipjack. There was a, a, a small business a couple of years ago that ran a commercial fishing around the, in our area. And they were catching very big numbers. And they were bypassing a lot of the, the other commercial fishing boats in the area. And they noticed that in the one particular area, that's not far from New Way, it's in our EEZ, that area was prominent with big, big numbers of fish. So they were fishing, fishing it. And then they noticed, because they kept going there, that that area, we, we might have had a domestic stock of tuna hanging around there. So being going to that same area over and over and over again, their catch rates were depleting and depleting as the years go by. So they reckon that we did have a domestic stock in the pelagic, the pelagic fish. But with the migratory ones that are coming around the island, we have noticed a change in size. A lot of them from a couple of years back were a lot bigger, a lot more mature and a lot more heavier. Now we're getting all the, the smaller sized ones, which are normally discarded by, you know, by the commercial fleets of being undersized and they take only the big ones. So we see that change in, in the fish, in the fisheries. And with the, coming back to your point about the, how we are dealing with the, sorry, excuse me. What was your second, your second, your second question?
My second question is whether this project now covers not only easy but also territorial waters?
Thank you. Sorry. Got carried on the full trade, train of thought. Yes, so we, the monitoring of our EEZ, as you know, that the, there is the system of where you monitor via satellite all the fishing vessels that are in the region. And we also have, our, the government has also agencies that have already previously in place to do the surveillance via air. And we've also looked and explored the opportunities of drone surveillance, fixed wing drone surveillance. So we're currently looking at that as well as in addition to the monitoring surveillance of our EEZ, specifically the 40%, but the 60% is already, that whole area is already monitored with the systems that we have in place currently before the OCCs was set up and still running to this date. But the 40%, we have definitely a lock. So hopefully that answers your question.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Talking about the 40% that is closed, the band, and you're monitoring that area and where that management could be put in place, but what about the remainder 60% of the area? What kind of management measures are there? How are you managing the remaining 60% of the area? Like for instance, restricting the fishery operations or is there a seasonal limitation that is placed?
So we are still, that area, the remaining 60% is still under mon, we're still monitoring that. We have not discarded that. We also have special permits for that area, which is still registered. It's not just the open free for all, it is a marine protected area, a large scale marine protected area. So the only difference between that 60% and the 40% is the no-take. So there is sustainable fishing still happening around the 60%. But that's the difference. And it's still being monitored by the, our agencies that we have in place. So we still get the reports via the chain of networks in, in the system. And it comes to fisheries, fisheries to government, the whole system of how that's getting monitored. So yeah, it is still under monitor.
Thank you very much. Sorry, but I have another question. That's about FFA. That's multilateral agreement. I think there, there must be the, the agreement reached between FFA and the United States. And I, then with that, I think of fishing rights, fishing rights or fishing right fees, that that will be distributed among member countries of FFA. So even after this initiative introduced, can you still expect the, the allocation of less than 2 million? I think whether that kind of funding allocated to New Way is also coming even when this system is in place?
Yes, I think, I, I do, I think that's still in place. But within certain measures, there are ways of how that's being managed. So it's not, like I said, it's, the fishing rights are there, but it has to be sustainable and in compliance with the whole system, right? So I, with the initiative in place, the OCCs in place, those haven't been disturbed too much, right? It's, it works harmoniously with those fishing rights in a way where they're still implemented and monitored. It's just that they can't come in and, you know, end at 40% and do their activities there. Anywhere around that, it has to be sustainable. Thank you.
Kia ora, Debbie from the Cook Islands, your neighbor. I'm sorry I missed the beginning of your presentation, but the aspects that I caught I just find so inspiring. I think what I love about this initiative is the buy-in that the community can have because I think one of the things that we experience in the Cook Islands is that we feel this overwhelming sense of sort of disempowerment really of being able to, what can we as an individual do to support the conservation efforts of our ocean that is so important to the way that we live? And this seems to me that by the government giving every person that lives in, in New Way a share in this mechanism, it means that you feel like you could tangibly, you're doing something and you can contribute more. And I loved the story of the grandparents and parents giving, gifting more. And I think, you know, you're like us, you've got more New Wayans in New Zealand and Australia. And maybe it's a way that they can do something too. I wanted to ask you the question of, was this driven from NGOs or, okay, I suspected it might be because we have NGOs that are doing this kind of work, but we haven't got to this level. And I'm really interested in how you got started, please.
Absolutely. I'm Kia ora, neighbor. Yes, thank you very much for this wonderful acknowledgements. And yes, this initiative was designed by an NGO, Tofia New Way, and in partnership with the New Way government, which did form the New Oceanwide project. So it was made by the people of New Way, for the people of New Way and the region and world. So the fact that the New Way government has sponsored every man, woman and child a one OCC each, like you said, it's to, it's to give them that sense of ownership as well and also that, to show what they can do in supporting this initiative. And it is open to, to anyone, anyone in the world. So like, the way this, this was developed, it's not only just the funding issue, it's, it's, it's the whole, you know, the model that we've been using throughout the years of, you know, getting the funding over and just ticking the box of some of those agencies that come through. It's not always, doesn't always work for New Way, right? And the, for us to use those in a way where it's nice and we can deliver properly, it's very hard. So instead of carrying on of those, we've decided to make something different and go a different way, something that actually works. And so far, the, from the government and also the community, we have, we've had consultations in designing this. We've brought in village, village groups, we've brought in matuas, the elders. And everyone was like, yes, we're all for it. This is not only for us, but this is, they can see the potential in this going forward. We've engaged stakeholders, back home, businesses, everyone. And they're in full swing for this. They're like, yep, green light, let's go. I guess it's not just, they can see the potential, right? It's not only for, for, for us right now. And they know and they've seen the impacts and climate change, that climate change has, has on our country and our neighbors as well. And so they're like, okay, so if we are able to have New Way as the beacon, pumping out the light, this initiative, we can hopefully create other beacons around the Pacific, pumping out that same light and then just helping everyone move forward in battling the issues we have of climate change. So it's not only for us, it's for everybody. So we're just, but there is, how do you call it, a way of, of getting there. We just have to sit down and create a space where we can discuss, because it might be different for Cook Islands, it might be different for Tonga in the way, because it's, in the way how it's set up, right? If we do scale out, it may not be 250, it may be higher or lower, depending on what the, your cost benefit analysis are in your tourism and all the, the sectors that you guys have. So yeah, it's 10 years of frustration culminating to this one solution. And it was launched and it's successfully going. So so far, if you go on our website, you can see the breakdown of the different countries that contributed, have contributed so far. And since then, we've raised a fair amount. And, and so far, Germany is on the lead. So if anyone's out there, wanna take their countries a little bit higher, you're more than welcome to. And just jump on our website and you can see the OCC's chart of where that's going. But yes, it is very family friendly and it is open to anybody. So it's the journey, it's the initiative for the future.
I have another question too, if that's all right.
Sure.
I, one of the things that I, I wondered about as you were talking and you're talking about the surveillance and monitoring of fishing in, in your waters. about the surveillance and monitoring of fishing in, in your waters and we equally have, you know, more than two million square kilometers of ocean and very little capacity around monitoring and surveillance. And the community are quite, the government gives reassurance that there's surveillance of what's going on, but you know, over such a vast amount of ocean, the community is worried that there could easily be fishing because we just don't have the capacity. We have one naval ship, you know, because of our relationship with Al Te'roa. But one naval ship can't do much. And of course you have satellite as well, but I, I'm interested in whether, whether you really, what's the right word? You believe the, that you really do have that full coverage of surveillance?
Yes, we have a manageable coverage so far and we're, we're hoping to develop that even further. So like I mentioned before, we are exploring the options of drone, fixed wing drones. So this could be not only one aircraft, this could be several, a series of surveillance drones going out and back. We were exploring that option and hasn't been implemented as of yet, but we are just using our current surveillance and monitoring systems in place to monitor that area. And also we're trying to ramp up the frequency of, of surveillance by, by air and also by satellite as well, getting eyes on as much as we can and monitoring the vessels around there. Because, you know, it is very true, some of the vessels can turn their, their monitoring things off and they can do illegal things there, but they can trace, they've got technology now that they can trace that and re-pick it up again and see where they've gone, where they're going and where they've been. So part of that trip up to Beveridge with the Navy last time was to look for potential areas to have marker beacons in, in place to prevent, to prevent, how do you call it, vessels, sailing vessels to come in and also prevent them from hitting the reef as well. Because there was an incident last year of a fishing vessel washing up and hitting the shore. And it was one of the, I won't say who, but it's, it was one of the fishing fleets. And the fact that there was no, how do you call it, beacons there yet, it was really hard for them to, you know, see where the reef is in high tide. But we are looking at doing that and also ramping up our surveillance with the possibility of using hopefully some, some drone technology in there. But for now, we are just monitoring with the current systems in place and trying to increase the frequency of those. Hopefully that answers your question. Thank you.
Sorry. Something out of interest and I, I think it's one of the challenges in the Pacific is in Tonga, is the waste management. So I didn't really see it, but how do you manage the, your waste? Well, there's almost insignificant industrial waste, but large vessels are being disposed at the coastal areas. Then how would you assess for its safetiness for fishing and recreational activities, making sure that it's safe for the people?
Absolutely. Okay, that is very hundred percent true. We do have that issue as well, to an extent where with the initiative here, we're trying to encourage even so the tourists coming in via cruise ship and also from the yachts as well, as well as also by plane. We have the, in our strategy of not only just the awareness, but just trying to educate them of the, how, the initiative and also how we are trying to move away from using plastic, using all those non-reusable, non-renewable material. And the way we, we manage our, the waste, plastic waste back home, we have a facility, it's a waste management plant that we've just recently got up and running. So it's, it'll take the plastic, it'll shred it and we're hoping to make molds for, say for example, cyclone shutters. So it'll go back into the community and it'll be repurposed and they can help, it'll help them. So it's like, we're also trying to explore the areas of a maker space. So you bring in kids from the schools and try and get them to be, use their creativity in managing and like in using those plastics and making, say for example, plates or utensils and things that can be on display for, for example, meetings and, and any, any place. So we have a management facility for that, for the waste. And also we do see, we do see some of the plastic and stuff drifting in from vessels and we have projects back home where we get the kids involved in going up and doing reef cleans as well as also in our main sea tracks. So when you go down there, we have a bit of a cleanup and then just get all the kids involved and explain to them as well what we're doing and why we're doing it. So those, that's from that level. And then we have the larger one, which is the waste management plant that we have in place. So we, we, the businesses back home, we're trying to encourage them as well to, to transition away from that and like bringing in those things and trying to bring in more plastic, more paper, wooden, renewable, reusable things. And so, yeah, just to help battle that issue.
The ships, the vessels, the ships, yeah, being run down, so it'd be disposed in the coastal areas.
Right, right.
There's no way to manage.
Yeah, yeah. So we have our officers go on, onboard, they board the vessels where upon, like when they come up and they, they run them down through where the things go, where this goes. And for example, if they have like big tons of waste on board, they have specific measures in place for that and they guide them through those, those, that system, not just, they can't just come in, you know, dispose just like that. There are protocols and measures in place. Yeah. Hopefully that answers the question. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think we're just nearing to the end. Of course, we have a lot of questions because it's pretty interesting and a very hot topic on ocean policy and so. And I had a question on education and awareness, which of course you have already answered. And I think it's a very good initiative that it has been embedded into the education system where children learn from at a very young age on activities that involves waste management and also, also on this ocean project as well. I know you have many messages to give here today using this platform, so, but what is one message you would like to give to the Pacific Island countries and also the community that are listening in, in Japan and other small island state nations to strengthen this regional and bilateral support and also encourage them to have this project on board as well? Simulka, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. One key message I'd like to give everyone is that the ocean and the world is all our home. It belongs to all of us. It is, and it is, it's key to our day-to-day living, whether you fish or not, whether you're an ocean goer or not an ocean goer, it is key to our survival, the oceans. And we're all part of that, we're born from the ocean, right? So my key message would be to do your best to support and look after this very wonderful asset and, and also join us, join this journey as well. Become a guardian of the New Way Mauna Mahu and join us on this journey in protecting and contributing to mitigating the issues of climate change that we all face in the world, in the regional space, in the world space and in also in our communities as well. So, and we're looking, looking forward to see this initiative being scaled, scaled out and, and helping other communities as well. Like I said, this is not only for us, this is for the region and the world also. It's a contribution for everybody. So we're taking you on this journey, come and join us. And let's all look after and safeguard our planet, our oceans, our people and our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Jean Namson and also the delegations that are joining in from New Way. Just to conclude, of course, yes, ocean is our source, our home and our responsibility starts with us individuals as well. Just a message that New Way has initiated this project and it is the role of all our Pacific Island countries to come together to support, to be part of this, which I see this project as a more solution-based initiative than just tackling, talking about the issues. But you, this project brings in the solution as well. So once again, thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Hola as well for joining in and also the Sasagawa Peace Foundation for giving us this platform. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes today's special session. Thank you very much indeed. For further details, please check out the NOW's website. And today, starting at three ten, we have the keynote address of the Prime Minister of Tubalu, Honore Veleti, the Panitara Teo. Once again, Mr. Jean Nam, the Marine Nam and Dr. Varahoa, thank you very much indeed.
Just, okay, just wanted to present something in behalf of New Oceanwide project. So I mentioned earlier that we have the invasive species pendants and I'd like to humbly ask a representative from SPF to please come up and accept this on behalf of our organization.